Called to all the meeting Mayor Board of Alderman for December the 3rd, 2024. If you'll join Alderman Parker in prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for your mercy and your grace. We ask you to look over us tonight with the wisdom to do what's right for the citizens of Long Beach. We ask you to bless the first responders, their families, and our military and their families, for we ask all these things in Jesus' name and his sake. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal.
Okay, roll call. Patrick?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Donald?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Angie is out tonight, and Bernie?
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. We have any public comments?
No, sir.
We have announcement, presentation, proclamation. We have Kelsey here with the Let's Go Explore Gulf Coast. Kelsey, if you want to come up to the microphone, this is something that we just getting out. I know y'all just getting your eyes on it, so I'm gonna let Kelsey talk about this, and we'll see where we go from here. Dr. Kelsey, by the way.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Dr. Kelsey Keel. I'm the Executive Director of Let's Go Gulf Coast. We're a local nonprofit. We're a fund of the Gulf Coast Community Foundation, and our mission is to combat childhood and adult obesity on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Our organization has been working here for about 10 years, so we've had different initiatives we've gone through with our communities over that time. About three years ago, I first approached Mayor Bass, and we were working with Jenny Levens at the time. We were trying to get this initiative, Let's Go Explore Gulf Coast, kind of the concept built for it, and it's taken us about three years to kind of develop and finalize this project. And so what we've done is, in partnership with all the cities and counties on the coast, so Harrison, Hancock, and Jackson, and the 12 cities within them, we've developed an innovative app that you can download for free on iPhones and Android phones. And what it does is it maps out all of our public parks and green spaces. So in working with Mr. Bob, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, we've collected data on the parks that are managed by Long Beach. We've mapped them out. We've geofenced them. We've cataloged all the resources there at those parks, and we've uploaded them into the app. So across our three counties on the coast and the 12 cities, we've cataloged over 200 parks and green spaces that are managed just by the cities and counties. So we still have some more work to do with like our state parks and spaces run by DMR. And I don't think people realize how many great outdoor spaces we actually have on the Gulf Coast. And so with that, users can download the app. The goal is to increase physical activity by improving the access to our parks and green spaces and making them more social places. So there's also features on the app that will help users engage with our parks and green spaces. There's gonna be some augmented reality games to help keep kids at parks and engage with them, like virtual scavenger hunts and things like that, park passports. But there's a lot of great features that we've developed in partnership with the cities specifically that make y'all really great beneficiaries of the apps as well. So we're asking for consideration for a $3,000 contribution towards this project, which would cover a partnership over the next year. And through that, we would be able to link the city of Long Beach, your social media pages and your website to all of the parks that you manage on the app. I worked with Mr. Paul Bob specifically on these part, sorry, hazard and wildlife reports. So we've given users the ability, when they're out at a park, if they see that there is damage or there's a hazard. So like after a storm, if there are tree branches down or there was park equipment damaged, users can take a photo of that, upload it on the app. It's geofenced. Our team would filter through them. And then we would be able to forward those along to the identified person in the city, which would probably be Mr. Bob, so that those could be quickly addressed, any citizens' concerns. Through the app, we'll also be able to disseminate city information, so any notifications that y'all had, especially through the calendar of events. So any events in the city that are around health and wellness, but for me, that's also like outdoor festivals, the farmers' markets, things like that, helping push that out not only to residents in Long Beach, but like neighboring cities, and then some events which you would want to obviously advertise to everyone across the coast. In another great way, just to push out any information related specifically to like parks and green spaces or boat launches, things like that, we'll be able to push out survey questions. So working with the city, if there's things that you've been interested on collecting data on in regards to parks and green spaces, we can incorporate those questions and push them out to park users after they've visited a park. So specifically, if they go to like War Memorial Park, when they leave, we would have the ability to push out two or three questions to them. And that's something that you at the city level would be able to give us, you know, what's of interest to you. And the last big thing that I'm really passionate about is the data that we'll be able to generate from the app and then being able to share that in return with the cities. So over the past three years, I've worked very closely with Tulane University, William Carey University, and Southern Miss. And so a team of us have all looked into things like this that could be somewhat similar, trying to, you know, do our best research on what would be the most impactful in our communities. And I can successfully say that there's no initiative or app that's been built like this in the U.S. So we've gotten some other grants for this project to kind of get it up, and we're very excited to launch it on the Mississippi Gulf Coast with the hope of seeing successful results here and then slowly, you know, spreading it throughout the state. It would be great to be a leader in something, especially something so promising about our parks and green spaces and getting our families out and active. So we'll be able to collect data on the park users, so you can look at when people are visiting the parks, how many people are visiting parks. Users will have the ability to leave feedback on all of our parks and green spaces, so being able to rate them on like a five-star scale, upload their photos, leave comments. And from a data perspective, that could be really useful in working with the cities. If you have parks that are being heavily visited, and this is stuff that a lot of cities already know, but we don't have hard, like quantitative data on. So if we can show that this park has X amount of users each month, it's being highly visited, the target demographic is young children or families. And then we get user feedback, you know, we would like to work with the cities and take that data and try to work on maybe securing new grant funding to build upon those parks that are being heavily trafficked. You know, if you have survey questions, you can push out to your community members, seeing like some features they might may want added or upgraded. And then on the flip side, if there's parks or outdoor spaces that aren't necessarily being heavily utilized, you know, getting some hard community data on that and seeing what we can do to work together to maybe improve resources at those spaces and things like that. That's a lot of information on a very high-level scale. Are there any questions for me?
I do, Kelsey. Maybe I missed it. How are you gonna determine usage? Is there a QR code they scan on a pole somewhere or?
So for like the marketing, you mean, to get users? So?
The visitors to each park. How is that determined?
How do you account for the visitors?
Yep, so it would be counted by, so someone would have to download the app on their phone. So when we're looking at numbers, it would be the number of app users. So right now, we do have a beta version of the app out, so you could go into your iPhone or your Android phone and just download it from the App Store. And then when you download it, like you'd create your user profile, and that's how on the back end, we would catalog all the users.
So on the profile, they would indicate what parks they utilize?
Oh, so visiting parks specifically. So, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yeah, so when someone makes a profile on the app, they would put in like their name, which doesn't really matter to us. Like, I don't save that information. But they can also supply demographic information, so like gender, an age range, and their home zip code, so we can generally keep track of, you know, are they young moms visiting parks? Is it children? Is it older individuals? Things like that. But then when you visit a park, what we've done is we've used technology to geofence all the parks in. So if you have the app on your phone and you go to Memorial Park over here, as soon as you enter that park, that visit would be logged. So the user doesn't have to do anything. It would already automatically be logged. And then once they're in the park, they can like get virtual points that they can redeem for items, like park items that will have like t-shirts and frisbees. We've worked with local businesses as well. And users can get park passport stamps, like something fun, and kids or anyone would have access to some augmented reality games within that park.
That's interesting. So you never know who's watching you and how.
Yes.
Other cities that have taken advantage of this on the coast, who have they been?
So so far, we have?
We can't hear you down here.
Can you? Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
My question was, what other cities on the coast have taken advantage of this?
Mm-hmm. So so far, we have already received like in the bank funding from Pasco Gula and Jackson County. And then tonight, I'm presenting to y'all, and I've been working closely with Waveland. That just hasn't been finalized yet. Waveland, Pass Christian, tomorrow, I actually meet with Mayor Hughes again, and Biloxi is close to finalizing the funding as well. I met with Diamond Head, waiting on some things with questions with Harrison County, so we're slowly getting through that. Moss Point is close to finalizing funding as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My only question is, will you have advertising or signage available for the parks? Like, say I don't know about it and I'm taking my child to the park, will there be anything making me aware of this app?
Yeah, that's a great question, and that's something that we'll work with the cities on and what the city specifically wants. And as I've learned, like every city is so different. So just speaking through examples, so specifically like Jackson County, that's something they've been very adamant about. So our team will develop like the marketing for, they want metal signage in all of their Jackson County parks. And then we'll work with them, and you know, they'll be the ones installing them. But that's come up with other cities as well, so that's something that we can definitely do together. We have marketing, what if we enter into this partnership to our plan, I have all the social media marketing. We would co-brand things. So there's things that I could give to the city for you guys to also put on your website and social media pages, which would increase awareness for the app and push users to download it. You know, the more users we have on the app, the more beneficial it is for us, getting people out and healthy, and the more beneficial it is to the cities, because it'll generate more data that we can use. So we've also spoken with like tourism and local hotels and restaurants on marketing, and over the years, we've worked with pretty much every school district on the, in the three counties. So working with them too to push out like digital flyers to the parents and things like that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? I think what I would recommend to the board, and I talked to Kelsey before the meeting, and she can come back, is that we table this to the next meeting, let y'all take this home, digest what it is, and come up with any further questions y'all may have, if that's the mind of the board, you know.
Mr. Mayor, not to interrupt, but I'm willing to make the motion tonight
Okay.
that we do the sponsorship. Now, I don't know if it'll get a second, but in my motion, I would recommend that we do it, but we use some of the interest that we've accrued with our infrastructure improvement money from the parks that we got to do park improvements.
Yeah.
We've, just by the spreadsheet I was looking, we've earned over $29,000 of interest.
Absolutely.
So if you, if you look at it this way, it's not anything taken away from that project. It's, it's increasing the project because we're getting advertisement out of this. So that's my, that's my motion.
I'll second. Can you add in that motion, the signage that we, you just talked about, that we would need them to develop?
Sure.
You know?
Yeah, I mean?
And then we, once we get it developed, then we come back and?
I would say with an earmark of, and I don't know what the cost would be, but earmark some money for additional signs at each one of the park to advertise this app. I mean, if we're making the investment, we need to, we need to take full advantage of it.
And what the, the motion is second is, is the $3,000 to go ahead and move forward to have us in the game for our parks, and then to allow further spending for the signs that we're gonna want to be able to do that. And I would also suggest that maybe we work along with some, some written pamphlets that we could help. I don't know if y'all give them out at the schools or whatever the case may be, to get more involved, because we do have, I mean, this board has spent a substantial amount of money in the last three and a half, four months upgrading our parks with new inclusive playground equipment
Yes, I know.
in all of our parks. And I think that it, you know, that's a very important part of what we're trying to do here, is get people out to the park. So anything else, y'all? The motion is second. Any more discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Keel, we're in the game.
Okay. Well, thank you all so much. I really appreciate it, and obviously, we can discuss more, but I know y'all have been doing so many improvements to the parks. And like something that y'all should know too, I mean, one of the goals of the app is to increase accessibility and visibility of these spaces. But I have now cataloged over 200 parks, and I know that Long Beach, y'all are one of only two, but maybe now three, that have a swing for wheelchair, children in wheelchairs. And that's something also that is not common knowledge, and like we did catalog ADA park equipment. And just on that note, there's not a lot of it on the coast, so hopefully, we can help promote specifically.
Let me just make a note, that's been there for about six years.
Mm-hmm.
And we have more coming.
And there's more, more waiting to be installed.
Well, it's great. Y'all will be a good leader on the Gulf Coast with the parks.
That's right. So thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We'll stay in touch to make sure through Courtney that we're working together on this.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. Do we have any amendments to the municipal docket? Hear none, we'll move forward. Approval of the minutes, Mayor and Board of Alderman from November 12th, 2024, a regular and executive session and the November 21st, 2024 special.
No move.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we approve Dr. Claims Number 120324. Motion second, discussion approval.
Motion.
Got a motion, a second discussion. Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we got a special event app, City of Long Beach Easter egg hunt. Motion second for approval.
Second.
We got a motion, second approval. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have shooter-ready update. Ms. Alderman Johnson, and I, I know she is out. Pete, somebody said that you had something you wanted to discuss on it.
Mayor, first of all, I see Jeanette's here, and I'll just, before I say anything, you've got the patience of Job, and I appreciate it. Angie has reached out to me. She said she has previously spoke to you. She also said that she had been in communication with council, who has further addressed the proposed amended ordinance, as I understand it, so that we can maybe move forward in this regard. And with that said, I would yield to Mr. Simpson, and he could shed some light on where we are at that.
Thank you, Alderman. We did, I did discuss this with Angie at the last meeting, I think, and since that time again. My recommendation to the board is that we approve amending Section 2410 of the Long Beach Code of Ordinances, which, which regards to discharging firearms. We've had a lot of discussion about how to approach this, given that our, our current ordinance makes it unlawful for any person to discharge a firearm within the city unless in self-defense or executing some law. But my recommendation, after a lot of discussion with different people and other cities, of which none have really adopted a firm ordinance on, on this type of activity. There are a number of them that have outdoor shooting ranges, like skeet and trap ranges, but an indoor shooting facility such as what this board was considering is a little more difficult. But my recommendation is that we amend that section to add a, a line that says, "This section shall not apply to duly licensed and approved shooting galleries," which is a distinction between a shooting range. It's an indoor shooting gallery, is how they are characterized, "which is licensed and permitted by the Long Beach Building Code Office and subject to safety inspection and approval by the Long Beach Police Department." And the purpose of that is that the location of one of these shooting galleries has to fall within the limitations of our existing zoning ordinance limitations, with some exceptions potentially. And then from a state's safety standpoint, from based on the board's previous comments and, and my discussions with, with a number of people, the police department should have a role in some type of, at least at a minimum, annual safety inspection and approval of these type of activities and facilities for the safety of the public. So I, I would suggest that you authorize me to prepare an amendment to that, that section of our ordinance. The amendment will probably, Alderman, include some authority for the police department and the building code office to initiate some permitting and licensing regulations. In other words, some minimum standards that they have to meet. So that's, that is my recommendation to the board.
Okay.
We, we thought at one time about creating a completely new ordinance, and there, there really is no place within our code that it properly fits other than amending the current firearm ordinance we have.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Based on the recommendations we've heard, I'd entertain a, a motion and a second for discussion to, to allow that ordinance to be put together and presented to us.
I feel as presented by, by council, that, that is exactly what is needed, and I will make that motion that we go forward and let Mr. Simpson amend the ordinance as proposed.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. We have any further discussion?
I do.
I do too. Go ahead.
Mr. Simpson, is that basically what you're saying? Would they have to file an application with the city, almost like a special use permit?
They would, although it wouldn't be a special u, well, it might be a special use permit. Mr. Gunlock could probably better speak to that. There would be built into it some exceptions, not within zoning so much, but there are some restrictions where, for a shooting range, for example, within so many feet of a populated area, there would be some exceptions for an indoor shooting gallery such as this, which would exempt it from some of the current building code limitations. And that's, that's the rules and regulations that I'm suggesting. Mr. Gunlock, Chief Seal, and myself try to sit down and, and craft.
So basically, my question would be then, put in the cart before the horse, let you handle that first, or let you guys handle that issue with the ordinance first?
Conversations about it. I think everyone has the general idea of what we're trying to accomplish. It's just wording it a way that both the code office and the police department, from a standpoint of, of conducting safety inspections. Something obvious, for example, is that from a code standpoint, the location of it in proximity to other heavily populated, either or residential or commercial areas from the police, that it's constructed in a manner and a material that ensures that no ammunition or projectiles can, can penetrate the exterior of the building. Those type of, of details. And then from a safety standpoint, that the police department satisfies itself that it's, it's properly staffed and trained and, and has trained personnel with respect to safety precautions and equipment. and, and, uh, has trained personnel with respect to safety precautions and equipment, um, and things of that nature, um, with respect to, to the type of firearms. No automatic weapons will be allowed, things of that. And those are the things that I would defer to the police chief and the code officer to specify, um, what best fits for this type of operation. It just has not been one previous to do.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Uh, the only other thing that I would add, Jeanette, um, we've talked about this, uh, beat it to death in the last few months. Unless I missed it, though, we did talk about at one point that you actually had a video of a, of a unit such as the one you proposed actually being used.
Absolutely.
Um, how can that be made, and I'm a proponent of this?
I've sent it to the mayor's officer.
The mayor has it?
That video? Yes, sir, we have.
We just gotta wait for this.
Yep.
Now we can send it out.
Okay.
If y'all can't find it, we can send it again.
No, I'm sure it's in good hands.
Charlene's got it. She, she runs the computer.
Well, we got it.
If I may, it's your initial presentation, you also provided some written materials.
Absolutely. Everybody got a copy of all that.
If, if, uh, would you make sure that Mr. Gunlock and Chief Seal have a current copy of that? That may assist them in tweaking some of these nuances we're talking about.
Certainly.
But I, I think it's pretty obvious to us, based on the number of conversations we have. Um, but we'd invite your input in that as well.
All right. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. We have any more questions, thoughts? All right, we got a motion as second. Uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being patient with us as we work through this complicated ordinance. Next, uh, cemetery fee update, Alderman Magui.
Uh, yes, Mayor. About, uh, six weeks or so, uh, we had a work session, and, uh, included in, as part of that work session, uh, I submitted, uh, in the form of, and, um, um, a variance to the, I think, ordinance 668, uh, whereby someone who, uh, claimed indigency, uh, could possibly get a break on cemetery fees. Uh, I was, was, I think I recall at that point, we were gonna turn it over to council, and I was just seeking an update on where we are with that. Hmm?
Because that was at a work session.
Yeah.
I don't think we turned it over. Excuse me, I can't talk, because that was at a work session.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Well, the.
I had prepared an application.
Yeah, yeah, please.
At the work session with regard to the possibility of, uh, variation to ordinance 668, uh, where the cemetery fees are, um, discussed and enumerated. I have it with me, a copy of what I had during that work session. At that time, it was supposed to be turned over to you for review. Uh, if, uh, if the board pleases, if I could do that at this point.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I, I do remember in Stacy's office, we discussed it, but there were some things in there that we needed to get some clarification on, how we could justify getting the information that you've got on there for us to.
And at, at the work session, I, I admitted, there is some pretty, uh, in-depth, uh, uh, private questions on there. But if you claim to be indigent, uh, I think it's worthy that it be proven that you are before you take advantage of such a discount. So, and, I mean, I don't need an answer tonight, I just want.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, we need to re, uh, uh, counsel and I will sit and we can revisit that, and I will try to maintain the knowledge that I have from the past on this, when we discussed it in the work session, and move forward with us being able to say, yes, we can, or, you know.
Or no.
And let the board, and let the board make that decision, you know, as it should.
And that, that's all.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next, we have, uh, ratify the amendment for the tidlin's lease. We've approved this, uh, uh, I've signed off on it, I just need to get the board to ratify it, and entertain a motion as second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Ms. Mayor, I, I have the, um, original amended tidlin's lease for your signature. If, and I'll leave that with you this evening. This is the amendment that we've been working on for some time that expands, um, our tidlin's footprint, is, is I have been referring to it. It's both a combination of our submerged, uh, tidlin's and our fastlins, or uplins, as they're sometimes referred to. This amendment was necessary as part of our great gateway project, and it expands our tidlin's lease with the state of Mississippi from 19.7 acres to over 32, almost 32 and a half acres, uh, for the benefit of the public. Um, that is, of course, without any cost to the City of Long Beach whatsoever. Uh, we pay nothing for that, for that lease, but we're required for the use of that, uh, to enter into a lease with the Secretary of State. Um, upon your signature, that'll be forward to the Secretary and Governor Reese for his, his signature.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, that, that's good news, because we have worked on that for several months. And, uh, you know, it's, it's still waiting for the governor's signature, but, uh, we feel confident that this will all happen. So. Thank you, Counselor. All right, next, we have, uh, the March 4th, 2025, uh, Mayor and Board of Alderman meeting discussion. Alderman Fraser, I think we got a conflict that day.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I made myself a note last year. Uh, it seems that this time every year, we run into a problem with, uh, having a quorum, uh, for this meeting. And I would just, uh, suggest that we either recess that meeting and have it the next day, or look at if it's possible to reschedule it now, or whatever. I know I'm, you know, five months out, but I want to make sure that we get this done instead of last minute. So, that's all, that's all I put it on there for, whether we need to take action tonight or not.
Well, would, would we, would we have to call them, have the meeting to be able to recess it? Or can we do it at a, at a prior meeting to be able to recess it?
I think at a previous meeting, you can reschedule the following meeting.
Okay. So, we need to, what, what we saying is, we need to make sure we got a lot of pasted, posted notes around?
Yeah, so that we remember, and that's why I started now. That's why I'm starting now.
All right, so.
I mean, I don't think any action needs to take on, I mean, or, or do we need to take action on it?
For everybody, it's Mardi Gras night, Tuesday, uh, Mardi Gras. Uh, and, uh, you know, last couple of years, I think we've, we've fallen where we've, we've had.
And have call-ins.
Had to have call-ins and such, and it's not, uh, it's not, uh, beneficial or, or right to the citizens we serve that we have all that many call-ins trying to do a, a board meeting. So, I, I think that you're right. Keeney, you'll get it on the, on this, on the calendar in February, the last, the third Tuesday in February for our board meeting, that we can make that note, and then have it on the Wednesday, the 6th of March. Okay? All right, any more thoughts on that? Okay, moving forward, department business, uh, mayor's office. Uh, we have, uh, I've sent a little drawing here. It's where the, the bathroom facility had been picked out to go over there, uh, through Bob and, and Courtney, uh, and also through, through Mike over at Public Works, because we're trying to get the closest spot we can get to for water and sewer, mainly the sewer, to get the, the flow, where we get enough flow line on it. And, uh, so I just want y'all to be aware of that, where that's going. And I think, uh, Mike said it would be Courtney next Fri, this Friday or next week, when they would maybe get going on that, uh, break ground on that. We're still waiting on the pavilion to get that underway. Uh, so, things are moving along slowly but surely, we're getting there, and we'll have a bathroom facility there before we know it, so. And that's, uh, that's all I have. Uh, I've got, uh, I've got something I'm, I'm working on. If I, if it comes out, I'll send y'all email on, on, each of y'all an email on what we're doing with that. So, uh, there's nothing, nothing under personnel tonight. Uh, under city clerk, we have a contract Harrison County redistricting service. We need to spread that in the minutes. Uh, need a motion as second to spread.
Motion.
We got a motion as second to spread. Do we have any discussion? This is something we've had done, uh, when was it done? We, we had that done?
September.
Yeah, so.
We have a final executed copy, so.
Right, yes. So, uh, got a motion as second to approve. Any discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Fire Department, uh, Chief.
I have nothing for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it's Police Department, we got an advertisement for bids for two police vehicles. Uh, motion as second to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, these are, these are in the budget. Just want to let everybody know, they were approved in the budget. Uh, you got anything else you need to add, Chief Seal?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Have we gotten the, uh, have we done any kind of traffic issue for the upcoming lights in Penny Lane, or whatever it is, off of Pineville?
Uh, I had a call from, uh, Ms. Mueller today to schedule a meeting.
Okay.
So, we're gonna meet.
I, the only reason I'm asking is I started getting phone calls from surrounding neighbors already.
Right. She's got some events planned, and I don't know exactly what those are, but we'll be meeting this week, and we'll come up with a plan from there.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, any, anything else? All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, Public Works, Mike, you got anything?
Good, thank you.
Well, good. I just want to say y'all are working, you and, and your group and your, uh, Bob Pauls.
Back up to engineering.
Huh? That's, I'll go back to it. Uh, but just, you know, y'all, y'all been working on getting everything right for the Christmas lights at Town Green. I appreciate that. Back to engineer the critical, uh, critical drainage bids. David, can you speak to us about this and what we've come, come out of those?
Absolutely. We, we took bids, um, before, the week before Thanksgiving. Um, we got two bids, we took bids for three projects. We got two bids on one of them, uh, one bid on one, and zero bids on the, the final. And all of them were anywhere from 60 to 100% above our estimated amounts. All the discussion we're having with contractors is just that, they're all very busy, probably bidding ARPA/MIQI projects throughout the Gulf Coast region. The reason I think this is not a problem, if you guys want to proceed this way, um, is that you guys entered into an MOU in August or July that really pushed the timeline requirements out significantly, and allows y'all the flexibility to, to take your time to get this. So, what I'm suggesting is, we have not prepared a bid tab for these because they're all well over our amounts, and sometimes you wonder if it's good for, to make all of that public. We, we could, if that's what y'all want to do, uh, we could just reject all the bids right now. Um, not maliciously, just not because we're, because we're gonna not go forward with them. So, if you choose to do that, we can, what we're suggesting is, we would kind of keep our, our, our finger on the pulse of the local contractors and find out when they think the timing will be right to bid these projects. We've already spoken with some of them, and they're talking about, uh, February, March would probably be a time when they feel like their schedules are gonna start lightening up. And what the hope here is that when they're not all so busy, the bids would be more favorable.
And, and just for public information, this is, we're talking about Parkwood and, and Brower Wood drainage projects, and that bid come in at over 100%.
Yes, sir.
More than what was estimated. Uh, Park Road Drainage, we didn't receive any bids.
No bids.
And then Magnolia Dearman Drainage came in at, and arranged from 60 to 100% more than the normal estimated cost.
That's right.
So, uh, I asked the board to list, list, uh.
I'm making motion to hold off on these and then.
Second. Second.
Start looking at it again the first of the year. Okay, we can do that.
All right, we've got that motion as second to, uh, just table these, and, uh, till the end, look at them first for next year. Okay? Uh, got that motion as second. Any more discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, all right, Building Office, Mike is out of town. He's in Natchez for a stormwater management class that's required of him. He won't be back in, well, he'll be back in town Friday, but won't be back in the office till Monday, so we won't get anything from him today. Uh, Municipal Court, Emma, you have any, okay. Uh, Harbor, uh, we have an agreement for the, uh, all safe, all safe technologies. Harbor security cameras, uh, entertain a motion and a second.
No move.
We got a motion as second to approve. We have any, uh, any discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, David, while we on Harbor, you got, you got anything here?
Just let you know, we are full, back up to full power.
Right.
I just want to thank Mike and all his guys for everything they've done with us down there.
Keeping you going.
Definitely appreciate it.
Good deal. All right, uh, Courtney, I see you sitting away from us. You got anything? She gives us a thumbs up. Courtney is here as part of her leadership Gulf Coast program. We're dealing with governmental affairs, uh, this week, and, uh, so she's too far in it, too far in it tonight. So, thank you. Uh, we have nothing on derelict properties. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, you got anything for us, sir?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, I'd like a motion as second to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
A motion as second, uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.